Good morning.
What you doing there?
No, I was just gonna ask you, Tim Ball keep you up too late last night?
He did.
He's good at that, I'm sure.
He did.
I said, you know, he's gotta be here for this team this morning, but he's been up too late.
One of the ones that left behind him got me up later. I was serious, saying, fellas, we could do it all our own time, I gotta go home.
There is enough dollars.
Hi, Brian. How you doing, buddy? It's all.
It's all good, dude.
Oh, every bit of. On your side, but you don't get no point.
I don't know about all that.
All the calls is.
I didn't even try to show them. People want mandates, you know.
Oh, yeah, yeah, thank you for the help.
Hey, uh, perfect baby, mine.
Oh, good.
I think she's saying much. Appreciate that.
Yeah, probably. Yeah, I would say yes, just. Earl, side of caution.
Y'all having too much fun.
I do, I do that too often.
Oh, no.
I do that too much.
Are you all hurt or not?
My kids go to the same, I play.
Part of the job. Part of the job. This is so weird, actually, man, I don't know. Anything I can do for you today? Anything I can do for you today?
Yep. Bring me the winning lottery ticket numbers, I'll split it with you.
As soon as I find them, they're both being loved.
How's things in the sports world? We're, it's not going along. Football and volleyball are full of stuff.
Canton's got a bye this week, don't they?
It's mine.
Yeah. Morning, thank you for being here. You'll stand will be led in a word of prayer by David Porter and remain standing for our pledge.
I pray. Heavenly Father, we thank you for this day today and our many blessings. And Father, just thank you for the opportunity to be a part of this meeting this morning. Pray that you be with our commissioners now as they make important decisions for you at the Van Zant County. Father, just thank you for all the families that are represented here today. And we ask that you just keep us safe as we go throughout this day. Watch over us as we travel to our next destinations following this meeting. And I ask that you watch over us as we carry on with our responsibilities each and every day. And forgive us of our sins, all this we pray in your name, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Thank you, David.
You're welcome.
Yeah. I call to order the regular session of the Van Zant County Commissioners Court on Wednesday, October thirteenth, twenty twenty-one, at nine oh two AM. Announced quorum is established with all members of the court present with the exception of Commissioner Melton. He's in training, so he's not going to be able to be with us today, but we do still have a quorum. Item number two, discuss and consider dispensing with a reading of the minutes of the Commissioners Court approval, same for September the twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-one. Did we have minutes, Susan?
I made a motion, we take it.
Okay, got a motion by Commissioner West to table item number two to bring him back next, the next Commissioners Court meeting, okay? Got a second by Commissioner LaPrin. All in favor, say aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Item number three, discuss and consider approval of county bills for payment as submitted.
So moved, Pearson.
Got a motion by Commissioner Pearson.
Second.
Second by Commissioner West. Any questions or discussion about the bills that's been submitted for payment? Being none, all in favor, say aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Item number four, discuss and consider ratifying of county bills that submitted. Got a motion by Commissioner LaPrin.
Second, Jason.
Second by Commissioner Pearson. Any questions or discussion about the bills being ratified? Being none, all in favor of approving, say aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Item number five, general business. Any general business? I know Dan probably got an announcement to make.
I do. So this Saturday, we've got a couple of things going on. Nine o'clock in the morning, people are gonna meet on the west side courthouse steps, and we're doing a Bob Moore Memorial Walk. So for those who don't know, did not know Bob Moore, he was very involved in East Texas, not just in Van Zant County or Canton, but, uh, great guys, he did a lot to make people's lives better. And Saturday, we're gonna do a memorial walk. It's about one mile. We're just gonna go down into First Monday, the food court area, and then come all back. That'll kind of kick it off. This is part of Walk Across Texas, which is launched by the Texas A and M Everlife Extension Office. And I sent some information on that out to county employees. But if folks show up for the Bob Moore Memorial Walk, they can sign up right there for Walk Across Texas. And the same day, from eight AM till five PM, the Veterans Memorial is hosting a military show. It'll be down in First Monday, the million four thousand. We have people from all over Texas, and I think even some folk are all coming. Something like fifty different vendors. And we'll have all kinds of military vehicles for people to look at. Thanks for the kids to do, free hot dogs for the kids. I hear there's a thirty millimeter, I'm sorry, a thirty caliber simulator gun. Man, it should be a great time, so go for a walk in the morning, come see the Veterans Memorial, have lunch.
I've read your information on the Walk Across Texas, but obviously, there was one error. It said eight hundred and thirty-two miles in eight weeks. You meant eight months, didn't you?
No. So Walk Across Texas, they set it up where you have teams of up to eight people. And the goal is for your eight-person team to log eight hundred and thirty-two miles in that eight weeks. And this is probably the fifth time that we've done this. And usually, my team makes it, so if you want to get on our little team, jump on.
Thank, is there any other general business we need to be made aware of? Any announcements?
Brooklyn Fire Department has their annual student carnival this Saturday, so after you walk and build up a good advocate, come on out there at six o'clock. They're free bowling sticks, bring your own bowling trackers, and enjoy the carnival.
Great, any other? It's a busy season, every fall. I mean, there's some festival or something going on somewhere. Any, any other general business? Okay, thank you, guys. We'll move to public comments. Rusty, did anybody, anyone sign up for public? No one signed up for public comment. We'll move to item number seven, discuss, approve rules of decorum, conduct, and and back up, discuss and approve the rules of procedure, conduct, and decorum at meetings of the Van Zant County Commissioners Court. They're always posted out here and on our bulletin board of how we conduct the meetings. Uh, we're getting ready to go into redistricting, and they wanted a copy of them. The last copy was two thousand, the last time they were approved was two thousand nineteen. We've got new members on the court. They said, we, we really do need a, um, you know, current one. That is current. Now, so we're just approving, uh, and changing the date, adding Mr. LaPrin to it. There's the, the only, the only change in, in these. It was paid electrically. They, they only changed made in this was on paragraph three. Uh, we changed that date beginning October thirteenth, twenty twenty-one, which is today. And then we changed on the signature page, uh, we added, uh, Commissioner LaPrin. Okay, have a motion to approve, uh, the rules of procedure, conduct, decorum at meetings of the County Commissioners Court. Have motion by Commissioner LaPrin, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner West. All in favor, say aye. Although the whole same side. Motion carried. Make sure we get your signature because we've got to send that to Austin. We're right on top of it. Having workshop to do the, change the boundaries of the precinct. If you've ever seen those boundaries, you think, how in the world was this drawn? But we'll, and, and it will be a Commissioners Court, be posted, uh, you know. Should happen sometime next week. Item number eight, discuss and approve bond for Nicole Nick's Assistant Auditor of Van Zant County Auditor's Office. You have that, you have bond there before. Got a motion by Commissioner Pearson, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner West. Any questions or discussion? Being none, all in favor, say aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Item number nine, discuss and approve the twenty twenty-one tax levy based upon the adopted rate. Uh, what you're approving is the nineteen million, nine hundred and seventy-five thousand, two hundred and twenty dollars and, and sixty-six cents. The, you see the breakdown, we, we put the breakdown in the agenda. Uh, county, county, uh, general levy, sixteen million, four hundred and sixty-four thousand, three hundred and fifty-six dollars and eighty-one cents. Special rule tax levy, three million, five hundred and ten thousand, three, eight hundred and sixty-three dollars and eighty-five cents, which totals the nineteen, nineteen million, nine hundred and seventy-five thousand, two hundred and twenty and sixty-six cents. We do need a motion to approve that order. We will send that out to the, to the appropriate district.
So moved.
Got a motion by Commissioner West, is there a second? Second by Commissioner LaPrin, any questions or discussion? Being none, all in favor, say aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Item number ten, discuss and approve the American Rescue Plan Act Management Services Contract between Van Zant County and Grant Works. Ms. Hill, did you want to address that?
Judge, Commissioners, uh, Grant Works has sent this contract for the court to review. I did forward the contract to this jury of the district attorney for her to review. Uh, the only thing, and, and I did invite Tom to court this morning, but, uh, she, I think she has some other court pressing issues, so she couldn't be here. Um, if you look on the contract on page five, at number eleven, talks about the Hatch Act. Now, I had to research that because I've never heard of the Hatch Act, but it is a federal act. Uh, just a highlight part of it. It does restrict our employees during working hours from wearing. You can't wear a t-shirt with a campaign on it. You can't have them be on this. Uh, if you're an employee, paid out of that fund, which I don't foresee that, uh, you can't run for office. And one of the things Tom told me is that employees can't be treasurers on candidates' campaigns. They can't be a treasurer for someone running for office if you're an employee at the county. So it's gonna be something that the court's gonna need to notify all employees of because it is a federal act, but because So it's gonna be something that the court's gonna need to notify all employees of, because it is a federal act, but because we are using federal money. We fall in under that guideline, and if we are found to be, that someone violates it, then we forfeit our money. So it's a very, pretty little small levy in there, but it's got a lot of impact on the county. So gonna get, need to get someone, uh, and get something sent out to the employees, so they'll know what they can and can't do. But otherwise, she said everything was so good. And once we get this contract signed, then, uh, you all got the email, we will begin, we'll do the kickoff. So we'll start with, uh, the kickoff of the project. I offer you money.
And what this is, just for clarification, this is that federal money that that they sent, Van Zek County. Van Zek County received ten million nine hundred and ninety-something thousand dollars. And so they sent it to the county, and then they told ev, just about every, uh, nonprofit organization, hey, we sent the county some money, if y'all want it, talk to them. And that puts us in a position, and, uh, but, I mean, it's it's so massive that we need to hire, we we have to contract for someone to manage it. I agree with that. Hatch Act, uh, my personal feeling, I don't think we should be wearing campaign shirts and stuff as as as, uh, government employees and stuff. I think it just, I think I, I agree with that. I think it's a good, uh, tool in that contract. But this starts the process, and then I guess the next meeting would be to to have a kickoff and for the commissioners to sit down and decide, okay. How we gonna spend the month, what's the projects, what are we looking at? Uh, this will run for, I believe, twenty twenty-six. It has to be completed, but twenty twenty-six, some of us won't be here, uh, for that. So it needs to be, you know, the the governing body decide, okay, here's what, here's the projects we're interested in. Is there a motion to approve this contract?
So move.
You got a motion by Commissioner West?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Pearson, any questions or discussion about the contract? Being none, all in favor say aye. Those opposed, same side. Motion carried. Senior, you gonna send that to them, or Chris, we need Christie to send it to them?
Uh, I have all the instructions, I can send it to downstairs.
Okay.
If I can give a signed copy of it.
Item number eleven, discuss and approve the Van Zek County Emergency Service District Number Two, a financial statement for the year ending September thirtieth, twenty twenty. You have the financial statement, there in your book. Good, Mary Ann Ritchie supplied it to us. Okay, got a motion by Commissioner LaPran to approve the financial statement, uh, for the E S D number two. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Pearson, is there any questions or discussion? Being none, all in favor say aye. Those opposed, same side. Motion carried. Item number twelve, discuss and consider approved discretionary exemption for engineer to review of the preliminary subdivision Platts. You know, Sandy, I I believe you touched on that in the last meeting, that, you know, if we's going, if we's going to hire an engineer, that's one of the areas that that you don't have to go out for bids. Uh, but if if we're not gonna go out for bids, then we need an order assigned by Commissioners Court saying we are going to use the exemptions. For the professional services of that engineer. Is there a motion to approve the order exem exemption of competitive bidding requirements? For the engineer to review the preliminary subdivision? Got a motion by Commissioner West, is there a second? Second by Commissioner LaPran, any questions or discussion? Being none, all in favor say aye. Those opposed, same side. Motion carried. Item number thirteen, discuss and consider retaining engineer consultant Brian Abbott to review preliminary subdivision Platts. I believe you put that back on there, LaPran.
Well, yes, we tabled last meeting because we didn't have the previous item approved. We didn't want to hire somebody without having made the exception first. Put it on, I just added it right back to it and bring it back up. This was that gentleman was gonna hire to review the Platts. Believe it was set at a separate.
Hundred and fifty dollars an hour?
And that should be paid for by the fees we collect, we set on the subdivision policy. Final fee, when you originally applied, final final fee, that should offset those expenses. We've already got some funds from that fund that the county set aside to give us and pay for the future.
Okay, is that a motion?
Yes.
Okay, got a, got a motion by Commissioner LaPran, second by Commissioner Pearson, any questions or discussion? I know that Dennis, was it Bogdan?
Bogdan.
Bog was here, he addressed some concerns and stuff, uh. If they had been discussed since then, or or anything or looked at.
Are you gonna sign a contract, Judge? But there's no contract.
Yeah, that's what, I don't.
Berger brought this up. I tried to pull up work, work, like it says in the pitch, I didn't have it in hand, I put it over here before I realized it was actually a pitch.
Well, let's table it then.
Yeah, I don't see a contract. Okay. I have a motion, second, approve, uh.
Take it for a second.
If you want to table, whatever you want to go forward, whatever you all want to do.
Uh, well. Unless, unless Chad, uh, I'll extend my second, he might want to, uh, put that on there to authorize you to sign it after review. We know what it's gonna be, it's gonna be a hundred and fifty dollars an hour. So we can have the contract made up, and if it's a hundred and fifty dollars an hour, and Tonda approves it, and then authorize you to sign it.
I like that.
And we can move on.
Okay, motion by Commissioner LaPran to present the contract to to, uh, Tonda for review. If a top, with the approval of Tonda, uh, then we would, we would approve the contract with Brian Abbott to review the preliminary.
And authorize you to sign it.
And and authorize me to sign it. At your motion.
My second.
Your second, okay, any questions or discussion on that? Being none, all in favor say aye. Those opposed, same side. Motion carried. I think the contract in, in Platts.
I was too, that's why I was having trouble finding it, I didn't realize Berger was gonna be out there.
Okay, because I'm thinking there was a contract in the book the last half, uh, the last meeting, and.
We've got copies, so we can look.
Okay, okay, we need to get it to Tonda. Discuss and consider contract between Van Zek County Precinct Four Road and Bridge and Hickory Hills Homeowners Association, Mr. West.
Uh, that's mine, we tabled it last, uh, meeting, uh, because it was an interlocal agreement, and, uh. We were advised by our auditor, not our auditor, but our our county, uh, law enforcement. Attorney, I'll get it in a minute. Uh, and he said that you can't have a home, a interlocal agreement unless it's between two governmental agencies. But he said you can do a contract, uh, and he gave two parameters on there on on the contract. One, it said that, uh, all costs have to be paid by the homeowner association, and that the project benefits the people of the county and benefits merchant service providers who must service the county. And, uh, so we just redrawed the, made it a contract rather than an interlocal agreement, and everybody was happy.
Okay, is that a motion?
Yes.
Okay, have a motion to enter into a contract between Van Zek County Precinct Four Road and Bridge and Hickory Hills Homeowners Association, is there a second?
Second.
Got a second by Commissioner Pearson, any questions or discussion? Being none, all in favor say aye. Those opposed, same side. Motion carried. Item number fifteen, discuss and consider accepting a check in the amount of seven thousand six hundred and eighty dollars from Hickory Hills P O I for covert replacement work.
And that's the same thing that the contractors for, uh, they had a massive, uh, covert that went across the road. And it was, it caved in, and it was, it was really dangerous. It needed to be, needed to be replaced immediately, and that's what we did, and they've sent a check now for, uh, the amount of the, of our, not only our material, but our labor and equipment used.
Okay, is that a motion to accept the check in the amount of seven thousand six hundred and eighty dollars?
Yes, sir.
From Hickory Hills, got a motion by Commissioner West, second by Commissioner LaPran, any questions or discussion? Being none, all in favor say aye. Those opposed, same side. Motion carried. Item number sixteen, discuss and consider adoption of hazard communication policy, Dan, Chloe, you want to address the court?
Good morning.
Good morning.
Um, yes, we're going to add a standalone policy, the Hazcom Policy, it's a hazard communication program. Um, it's pretty much designed to, uh, protect employees, employers from, um, various chemical uses, and also, um, prevent illnesses and injuries also. And it's also to, um, keep us in comply with Texas Hazcom Act, and it's keep us in line with the law, so, um, we'll take a moment to.
You have the, you have the policy before you. This pretty well just pertains to the Commissioners Court, I'm not Commissioners Court, the Commissioners, uh, at their facilities and their, the chemicals that they use. There gonna have to be a posting there about those hazardous chemicals.
It really pertains to our Road and Bridge employees, but any employee who's using chemicals needs to be aware of the hazards of those chemicals. So really, you know, the vast majority of our employees, so don't do this. It happens in the county barns out on the road, and our maintenance team also deals with quite a few chemicals. So that's what we built into the policy, and at the end of the policy, you'll see there's a space for all of you to sign, and I added the facility manager. So that'll keep us in compliance, there will be training with this. Our Texas Association of Counties Risk Control Consultant, Isaac Garcia, will be here December fourteenth to conduct that training. And this annual training, we've done before, you likely remember, coming in here, seven o'clock in the morning, we we train our Road and Bridge employees. Then we also tack on other things like substance abuse training and reasonable suspicion training. So we're, we're staying in compliance with the law, and this policy just kind of be set up. And if anyone comes looking around, they'll see we do have our ducks in the row.
So move.
Got a motion by Commissioner West to approve the policy, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Pearson, any questions or discussion for Chloe? Being none, all in favor say aye. Those opposed, same side. Motion carried.
If we can get that last signature page, have each of you sign it.
I don't have.
I don't have.
It's not in our book.
I'll come and bring it up for you guys.
Item number seventeen, discuss and consider approval of fiscal year twenty twenty-one budget amendments. You have the budget amendments before you, quite a few of them. I'm always gonna look for the humor. Actually, all I seen one in here. We have a recent explanation for the request, and it said, cause Auditor's Office said so.
Yeah, are most of these for, uh, the twenty twenty-one budget instead of the, all of them are on this one, okay.
Yeah, because I looked at the I T, is that one you're looking at, the I T?
Yeah.
Uh, where?
There was one, I think, that was posted twenty twenty, they got put in there, but that's moved on.
Okay, is that, is that? Was that for that?
I T, maybe the contingency, it was for the, um, fire wall, they all approved. They put it for the new Southern toss there.
Yeah.
But it, it was in twenty twenty-one, but it shouldn't.
Okay, good. Okay. So you, we need to move that one out of the twenty twenty-one and put it in twenty twenty. Okay, is there a motion to approve the twenty twenty-one budget amendments?
So move.
Got a motion by Commissioner West, second by Commissioner LaPran, any questions or discussion? Being none, all in favor say aye. Those opposed, same side. Motion carried. Item number eighteen, discuss and consider approval of twenty twenty-two budget amendments.
So move.
That's all, there's only one we just moved, and then the one for Road and Bridge Precinct one. Motion by Commissioner West, is there a second? Second by Commissioner LaPran. Any questions or discussion on the twenty twenty-two budget amendments? Being none, all in favor say aye. Those opposed, same side. Motion carried. Item number nineteen, discuss and consider monthly reports submitted by various offices and departments of county government, and approval of entry of same in the court's minutes as matter of record. Commissioner West, you have a comment?
Uh, I do, we, uh, we did really well, we got twelve in this first meeting here, so. Looks like we all are making this.
Is that a motion to approve the monthly report?
It is.
Okay, we got a motion, is there a second? Second by Commissioner Pearson, any question or discussion on the reports we received? Being none, all in favor say aye. Those opposed, same side. Motion carried. Item number twenty, uh, closed executive session in compliance with section five five one point zero seven four of the Texas Government Code. Uh, to deliberate the employment, employment evaluation, reassignment duties, discipline, or dismissal of a public officer or employee. Or number two, to hear a complaint or charge against an officer or employ, or employee. We will now enter into, what time? Nine thirty-one, we, at nine thirty-one, we will enter into executive session. Uh, we will come back into open session, uh, once we have concluded the, uh, closed executive session. You may, I've asked the Sheriff's Department, uh, Dan, and and you guys can stay, uh, Kenny, Sandy, if y'all want to stay. Make sure all recordings are turned off.